Hi Krista.
Hi, is the oil jersey too much?
No, I think it's okay. I can hear you loud and clear.
Good, and I'm not using my headset, so.
Okay. I'm gonna mute.
Yeah, I'll mute too.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the council meeting of Town of Quispam Sis for May the 18th, 2021. And of course, our last meeting, so thank you for joining us here this evening. I will call for the approval of the agenda. It's been moved by Councilor Olson. Second by Councilor Luck. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, thank you. Item two, Mayor's comments, if you do bear with me, I do have a couple. Summer is almost here, and that means it will soon be time to take a dip in the 97.3 The Wave Pool at the Qplex. Things will be a little different than usual this year due to the pandemic protocols. But there will still be plenty of fun in the sun when the pool opens on June the 12th. The Wave Pool offers member swims, public swims, and free swims daily. Capacity this year is limited to 150 people. So to guarantee admission, people must register online in advance. Visit www.qlex dot quispam sis dot C A for more information. I want to also remind our residents of two important items in our animal control bylaw. Scooping after your dogs does his or her business and is part of your responsibility as a pet owner. And all dogs and cats must be registered with the town. Fines starting at $50 can be issued for these violations. To register your animal, you can visit Town Hall during normal business hours or call 849-5778 and press one. Finally, many people have been asking about our summer programming. I am happy to announce tonight that we are moving forward with plans for our regular activities, like movies and music in the park and our free wellness and activity classes. Of course, we will follow all pandemic protocols as provided by public health. I know all of us are looking forward to summer in Quispam Sis. Thank you. Item three, moment of reflection, Councilor Ryu, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. We'd like to take a moment to pause and remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias and always in the best interest of our community which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Council Ryu. Item four, disclosure of interest. Not hearing any? Item five, presentations, 5A.
Proposal to operate farmer's market at the Arts and Culture Park. And Mr. Andrew Ryder is in attendance, and there's also a staff report from the Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder, if you'd like to come up. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Quispam Sis. Thank you for being here this evening. I will remind you that there's a 10-minute time and that after that, we can ask questions or if you have any other comments at the end.
My name is Andrew Ryder. My wife and I were looking to open an outdoor Quispam Sis farmer's market. Unfortunately, she's not here this evening. She gets a little bit shy and she started to have a panic attack with the idea of standing in front of everybody. But she's home cheering me on, I think. The area that we're looking is just the park that we have right here. It's a beautiful location. My wife has been working in the markets for 26 years. And then one day she said, let's take a look at the park behind the Town Hall of Quispam Sis. We're looking at it and drawing things out, and your staff has given us overhead views so we can map out different things. And it is such a beautiful location. What we're looking for, for the Quispam Sis farmer's market, is to bring an economic viable business that just promotes local. We want local people, local vegetables, local meat. We want harvested, crafted, sourced goods all from New Brunswick. Isabel and myself are going to work with the vendors to promote their goods and work towards the beautiful market for Quispam Sis. And we truly believe that our neighbors here will appreciate benefit and will visit us on a regular basis. And this will promote the beautiful grounds that Quispam Sis has to offer as well as offering something new to the beautiful town. It's going to be used for the sale of baked and cooked goods, meat, fish, poultry, butter, eggs, cheese, honey, maple syrup, jams, jellies, preserves, sweets, flowers, plant shrubs, fruit, vegetables, other farm, garden, dairy produce, and handmade crafts. Where there's going to be a lot of food, we also have to work closely with the Health Inspector, and we've already been in contact with her. The papers and all the forms have been submitted to the Regional Medical Officer of Health, and that's going to allow us the permission to have 150 people on site. The items of flea market variety will not be sold at the market. We don't want to have that sort of garage sale idea. All the COVID-19 guidelines will be encouraged. We're going to make it so that everybody is going to be able to attain all of the proper protocols. And who, if somebody doesn't comply, I'll speak to them, or one of us will, and we'll just remind them to have to wear the mask and to abide by the six-foot rule. The mandatory spacing of the two meters is going to be achievable for all the vendor stalls and the traffic while keeping a steady flow. We'll be doing the steady flow by having arrows out for the people to follow. And that's, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryder, for your presentation. I will now open it up for any comments or questions from council at this time, if they have any. Councilor Luck.
Thank you, Your Worship. And thank you. I read through, and it's quite exciting adventure for sure. One thing that I wanted to ask is what kind of protocols you have in place or will have in place for the vendors and for the cleanup afterwards? Because I know after these events, sometimes, you know, you get everyone there, they have their stalls, and what's left behind is sometimes not very attractive, so are there's going to be clear guidelines for people to pick up after themselves, so to speak?
Sure. What we are doing, I'm making up an application for a vendor to agree that they're going to be working with us. And in that, they're agreeing that they're going to be responsible for their own waste. And that way, I'm going to make sure that it adheres to, they're going to be assigned one spot, and that's going to be their spot. Unless something else comes up, they have to be moved. That's the one spot, and I'll be able to know who is and who is not following the instructions that they agree to with their signatures with the application.
Council Ryu.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I may have missed it, but one of the big features of farmer's markets, of course, is food.
Yes, sir.
I mean, did you comment? Did you say we're gonna?
Yes.
Because a lot of people, and oh, the other thing is, this is going to be a Saturday?
Sundays.
A Sunday. Sorry, I missed it earlier. A Sunday, and a lot of people use it as an opportunity to go and have breakfast. And then, so that would probably be a big ingredient if you can get a menu or some kind of, that is, the word of mouth will get around and people will say, hey, I just had a wonderful breakfast and looked around at your marketplace. So hopefully, that'll happen for you. Thank you.
What we're looking, though, is an evening market from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see, sorry.
It's the other market that's in St. John, because I want those vendors to come here when they're done there. I'm trying to play nice with all of them. That's why we're looking at the schedule, right? Because we all work together.
They could have an afternoon snack or an early evening supper. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder, for your presentation and for bringing this opportunity to Quispam Sis. And I know one of the questions I had was whether or not there would be available washrooms. And I was indeed told by the Director of Community Services that those would be provided and that there was something in place for those to be cleaned up after and that the property would be returned to its normal pristine state. So welcome and best of luck with that. I hope you're very successful.
Thank you very much. We're really excited about this.
Councilor Olson.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you very much, Mr. Ryder, for your presentation. This is an exciting opportunity, I think, for Quispam Sis. And as a lot of these things happen, all that is missing is the promoter. So we're very fortunate to have yourself coming here this evening. And I think it's a great idea, and I think it will become just as popular as the Kingston Market there.
Thank you so much, sir. That is our goal.
I hope that the guy with the salmon comes.
I'm going to try to, but we have to do something with the power outside.
Well.
Our stall in Kingston is right beside his.
Yeah.
But we have to do something to make their power stronger because he uses two or three outlets for his heat. So that's something we have to look at down the road, I think.
I'll leave that with staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Lockery.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a couple of questions. I think it's a great idea also. It's a great use of, with the park, it would go very well. My question would be, how many vendors are you looking at? And for space-wise, you know, what kind of a footprint would you be looking for for the amount of space needed to house the vendors? And then my second part of the question would go to the Director of Community Services and just wondering if, you know, if we do have the space available to be able to do this.
The most vendors that we'd be looking at would be 80 to be able to space everything out right now, judging with COVID. It's very hard to get 80. If you've gone to Kingston Market, they have 82. They have a lot more space there. So we're thinking to start out, we'll probably have 50 around that area. And then people will eventually be joining in afterwards once they see that this is going to be a good business for them. As far as the footprint, looking at the overhead view, it's going to be utilizing a lot of, a lot of the area. Got the picture up here, but just in this area alone, we can have about 15, right? And that's going to be on the cement just down from the bandstand. And it's utilizing everything and being able to have the six feet space between each of the stalls. I spent a lot of time hanging out here doing measurements and stuff. Spent a lot of weekends.
Okay, and so to Mrs., or sorry, to the Director of Community Services, are we okay with the space requirements?
Yes, Your Worship. Staff have met on site with Mr. Ryder, and we have received a map from the GIS department and done all the measurements for the 1,400 square meters for the space, which is the concrete and the grass area. So that's how we determined the number of 150-plus vendors, which will be the same number we're using for our movies and music. And that allows nine square meters per person in that space, so.
Does that answer everything, Councilor Lockery?
Thank you.
Councilor Miller.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you for your presentation. I guess my question's kind of tying onto that as well. So when you have everybody spaced out, there's also going to be people over in the grass areas. And if they are, are we going to have large trucks driving over the grass or the sod as well? I'm just trying to envision what it may look like. To start, obviously, it's going to be a bit smaller with COVID, but how large it could get. But also to make sure that where they're all stationed is that we're not having any, you know, large trucks driving across the grass or things like that.
Oh, no, the property will not be damaged at all. They'll be responsible for moving their own gear to their spot without bringing their vehicles. We can have the things wrapped.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Council Olson.
That was my question, too. Sometimes, when we've had some events there before, I've noticed cars are actually parked right on the walkway. And there's always that possibility, human nature, that you're going to run off the track, and it's not really that wide. So is there, is there permission allowed to allow vehicles on the walkways? Okay.
I've never requested. I wouldn't expect it.
Yeah, no, that's good. Just, it's a good message to get out there initially.
Oh, absolutely, yes. I'll put that in the application also.
Okay. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Councilor Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Mr. Ryder. It's a great idea. I would move that pending the operator receiving approval from the provincial government, council approves the request by Mr. Ryder to operate a farmer's market in the Arts and Culture Park this summer and continue to work with town staff and public health to ensure all guidelines are followed in the establishment and operation of the market.
It's been moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Deputy Mayor O'Hara. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried, 7-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Ryder.
Thank you so much, Your Worship.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Item six, public hearings. There's no public hearings this evening. Item seven, minutes from the previous meeting, May 4th. Looking for a motion to receive and file. Deputy Mayor O'Hara, it's been moved, seconded by Councilor Luck. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Thank you. Item eight, unfinished business, 8A.
New Brunswick Local Governance Reform Green Paper, Working Together for Vibrant and Sustainable Communities Discussion Referred from the May 4th Regular Meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Nill. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Councilor Olson.
Thank you, Your Worship. There's a lot of questions on these, on this 38-page document. I've got notes in almost all of the, in all the pages. But I think that, you know, they're talking about integrating the LSDs with adjacent municipalities, towns and villages and cities and that. But I haven't seen any clear-cut allocation of funding to assist the LSDs in being brought up to power that they would be wanting with the incorporated municipalities. And the people moving into the LSDs presently have been the ones that have wanted, that have wanted that lifestyle. And the province has supplied the basics there with a reduced tax rate. And as mentioned, a lot of the outlying municipalities away from structured municipalities do not support a lot of the assets that municipalities have and that they pay for. So I know that in the St. John region, in the 1998 arrangement, the, I'm just looking for that page here. In 1998, the province initiated the funding requirement when we all amalgamated. I guess on page 17, five facilities, plus we just recently shared an economic development initiative. But since nineteen ninety-eight, the Greater St. John Regional Facilities Commission Act and the creation, and also with the creation of the regional service commissions, Chris Pamsis has contributed in excess of ten million dollars over those twenty-three years. And so, we've done a lot of things already. And we've done it with, you know, very careful prudent spending of taxpayer dollars with a tax rate of dollar thirty-eight, dollar thirty-four. But a lot of the verbiage in here seems to relate to the ability to pay. And, you know, I mean, if, if we want to assist other municipalities or other, or other regional areas, we would have to, we would have to increase our taxes to assist them. And I just can't see a lot of this stuff being, being acknowledged and supported by the, by the LSDs. I know that the Kennebukis Valley Fire Department tried to increase their coverage or increase, they requested an increase in the costing from the provincial government for the local service districts that they were servicing, and the province wouldn't, wouldn't agree to it. I mean, that's just one little example. And the old saying that you get what you pay for. And I'm just, I'm a little bit apprehensive in this whole, in this whole thing. And they talk, they talk about, they also talk about how it seems that just Fredericton and Fredericton and Moncton are gonna increase in population, but St. John isn't. And I can't, I can't imagine where they've got that statistic. But, you know, it is anticipated that over the next twenty years, only Moncton and Fredericton regions, and to a lesser extent, St. John, will experience population growth. All other communities are expected to experience decreases. So, that's a great message. And they talk about specific studies in New Brunswick and sharing arrangements, establishments, regional cost and service sharing arrangements that were made in the Greater Moncton and St. John areas. But in Moncton, the arrangements there for policing, they get a ten percent subsidy for their RCMP operation that nobody else gets that I know of unless some of the, some of the LSDs receive a similar type of subsidization. But, you know, we're not, we're not playing on the same field in a lot of areas. And just with the, the regional funding and that, you know, with Rossay, Chris Pamsis and Riverview being in the same, same pot, same region, same class provincially. And you've heard the story before, Rossay and Chris Pamsis have lost money consistently. We went down from, I think, eight hundred thousand plus down to a hundred thousand over the years. And at the same time, and Rossay lost a lot of money similarly. And at the same time, Riverview has been getting in excess of two million dollars, which is exactly what we've all lost. And it doesn't seem fair. Our tax rate's a dollar thirty-four, there's a dollar fifty-six or a dollar fifty-eight. And anyway, there's an awful lot in here to digest. And there's a lot more examples that I could talk about. But, you know, they're talking about expanding the regional service commissions, but I question that knowing that, that we've got, we've got a growing community and expected to expand our communities and then have enough of the governance level at the regional service commissions, which I don't really support. Anyway, that's just a few of the things, Your Worship. I could, I could talk a lot more, but I'll let some other counselors talk.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I'd have to agree with some of the remarks from Counselor Olson. When I read through the document the first two times and I continually saw words like "should", you know, or "could", "this could happen" or "that could happen", there was no definitive. And I know that it's just the green paper. But I happened to drive around Darling's Island and I drove up around the Smith Road and Fraserbrook Road up in that area. And if there were a case where we were to take on some of these LSDs, the deterioration of some of those roads is absolutely deplorable. And I would hope that if we have to adopt any community, that it's going to be in A-one shape when, when that happens. But certainly, that is not what I wanna see. My understanding was that some of the LSDs would, would sort of group together rather than have them group with the larger communities. So, perhaps that's what is, is down the line for, for some of the LSDs, might be for them to join forces. But certainly with Chris Pamsis, we're not looking to expand in that regard. As Counselor Olson said, we are expanding, we are growing, and we've had one of the top years ever in our housing starts. So, so we are a growing community. And it will be interesting to see what happens down the road when the, when all of the municipalities have an opportunity to give their voice to the green paper. So, thank you. I, it's just something that I think we should be aware of.
Counselor Rio.
Thank you, Worship. Just alluding to a comment that Counselor Olson made, we failed to remember that any community that serviced, serviced by the RCMP, especially a large community like Riverview, Dieppe and Moncton, that we, in fact, are subsidizing that police service by paying our federal taxes to the RCMP. Now, it may not go directly to the Moncton detachment or the whatever, the Kodiak detachment, but it's still the money that we pay in our federal taxes, our citizens, goes to taking care of the RCMP offices in Ottawa and all their other facilities all across Canada. So, yeah, we, we are penalized in that way that our, our citizens are paying, you know, helping other, another community with their, with their police forces. And I mean, this is something that, you know, they don't, they don't seem to recognize that, that we are at a penalty here. We take care of our own here, our own police force alongside Rossay, do a great job. But yet, we also, through our federal tax dollars, are helping Kodiak, for example, or the LSDs in Kingston, on the Kingston Peninsula. For their policing, our, our citizens are helping them too. So, I just wanna point that out. And as Counselor Olson pointed out, it's, it's, it's a point that people forget about. Yeah. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Rio. Good point. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you all the other counselors and deputy mayor for their comments. So, I read through this a few times as well. There's a lot of "could", "should", "this might happen", "we could merge smaller communities, larger towns". It kind of inferred, maybe untouched, but then it talked about larger things and maybe doing all recreation together. So, bigger's not always better. We've gone through amalgamation out here in the last few years, which is great, and I think it's worked well. But where have we been spending all of our money on our streets lately? It's out in Bradley Lake Road, Hammond River Road, things that weren't kept up to maybe what we would have liked. And that's what the deputy mayor talked about. So, and I think there was a part in here where the LSDs, their road costs aren't even paid by their taxes right now. So, that's something the province needs to, to address. And you look at what we're doing here with St. John, we're already well ahead of everybody. We've already, we put into, and I don't wanna get into all the rinks 'cause you start rinks and you're gonna go to ball fields, you're gonna go to beaches. We already help subsidize or participate in, you know, the TD station. We already know about that. Nobody helps us with, with our Qplex. There's lots of ideas in here, but there's nothing really of substance to tell us what's happening to us. Yes, there's a financial thing actually tonight in English that none of us can watch because we're here. I don't know if it would actually say anything because, in essence, it makes sense. If you've got fifteen different small communities in a small area, yeah, put them together. Make, make one larger fire department, make it, make it easier. We've been doing that and we've done that even here, like when French Village and Godola Point were merged, Hammond River. So, I think all that's good. But again, when I say bigger's not always better, if all of a sudden they put us into these twelve districts like they're talking about, so what's gonna be the, you know, the level of participate or want to do the Bradley Lake Road or the Hammond River Road if you've got other issues in downtown St. John as an example? That I don't know. So, like I said, there's lots of ideas. You know, we're, I think we're already probably, if you wanna say, we're the gold standard already. We, we're already participating in tourism. We made that decision last year. So, with St. John, Greater St. John, we're in there. Hampton's now part of our group. We're helping out with not just the TD station, but the Aquatic Center and everything else. So, if things stay the way it is for us, I think we're good. I'm gonna be a little concerned if all of a sudden they start throwing rinks in 'cause, I mean, we've already had a person from the province come out here for eighteen months and did nothing at the end because he just asked about the same thing. And at the end, they wanted to hire a consultant to figure out what they wanted to do. So, the paper is nice to have a paper. I think it gives me, at least me, it gives me more questions than it does answers. We know things have to change, but from a Chris Pamsis perspective, the last time I asked anybody here, and our CEO, CEO was here as well, CAO, is, I don't think anybody from Chris Pamsis has been in any discussion yet. So, I know they've been talking about this for six or eight months, but we haven't been at the table and we're the fifth, sixth largest community in, in the province. So, if we're not being touched, fantastic. If there is gonna be a big change, I think we at least need to, to have a say at the table, so. And it's hard to have a say at the table when they're doing some virtual things that we can't even attend, so. Anyways, that, that's it. So, I guess we will see what happens when this white paper comes out. And I guess looking at Mayor Clark, I don't know if you or, or Mr. Ville have been involved in anything or have they contacted you or no? Okay. Thank you.
No, there has been no contact with myself and I don't believe Mr. Ville, she hasn't mentioned it either, so. Oh.
Just as information Counselor Thompson had sent out as the Region Director for UMB that these engagement sessions, yes, there is one tonight on the finance part of it, but on Thursday, May twentieth, there's an English, the session on the regional collaboration and land use planning. And I believe, too, that they have regional engagement sessions. And there.
It's one in June.
Had gone out, Region, Region Nine is June twenty-third. So, just further information.
Thank you. Yes.
Counselor Miller, you had something?
And sorry, just, thank you, Worship, just to follow up 'cause a lot of this talks about, and Counselor Olson talked about, about the, when they, when they share the, the funding and that and we get zero, it's based on tax rate almost solely. So, we focus on tax rate a lot and that's what we hear in the media 'cause it's an easy number to discuss. But what we don't discuss is what the average taxpayer pays. So, I haven't seen the last data for the last couple of years, but two years ago, the average residential person in Chris Pamsis paid more taxes overall than the average person in Riverview. So, we don't control our assessments. We control our budget. The budget divided by the assessment equals the tax rate. So, we've been, our, our assessments are significantly higher, but the average person in Chris Pamsis, the last data I saw, pays more than the average resident of Riverview. So, if you start looking at who pays what versus a tax rate that's only one-third of the formula, we need to see what does every resident, what's the average resident pay in every region and every municipality? So, and again, I just did my own little Kirk Miller math. You know, I looked at my street and I compared it to Bedell Avenue down in St. John and found out, guess what? Their house, their tax rate's higher, their assessments are lower, but people in my street pay more than they do, just as an example. So, we need to look at what we're paying in overall taxes and not just focus solely on the tax rate. Because in this instance, Riverview gets two point three million dollars because we appear to be lower, yet we're actually paying more than them. So, I don't think that'll change the whole conversation with them yet because the tax rate's the easy way that they, they do things. But just, just a comment on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, Your Worship. I just wanted to point out that the information that was sent out, the, the first part of that is stakeholder meetings. But the, the list of all of the regional ones, those are for municipal officials and all of that sort of stuff. So, you, you can really bop into any of the region ones. You don't have to be from that particular region. You have to register and there is a number or an email address to register to attend whichever one you want. So, just wanted to point that out that you, if you can't make one, you may be able to make another and, and you can make comments. You have to register just so that they can identify how many people are there and who is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Not hearing anything else. Well, we have, we don't have a resolution here and we have these upcoming meetings, so. So, we'd be just looking for a motion to receive and file this for now. Counselor Miller.
I'll make that motion, Your Worship.
It was moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Rio. Yes. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Thank you. Item eight B.
Community members serving on boards, consideration of remuneration and provision of town electronic devices. And there's a staff report from the town clerk.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. So, we have the information here and resolutions regarding non-elected committee members' allowance and reimbursement. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, so we'd move that non-elected committee members' allowance and reimbursement as it has been five years since the adoption of policy number fifty-two, a policy regulation, non-council, non-staff members serving on town committees, boards and commissions. Council refer the policy to the incoming council to review as part of the 2022 budget deliberation process.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Luck. On the question? Counselor Rio.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I, I have spoken of this previously. I will not be here, of course, to, to work on the budget this fall. I have been, been, been concerned that our, particularly our Planning Advisory Committee receive twenty-five dollars per meeting. I notice we have a, a list here of other municipalities and some of the cities and so on. You, You Worship, council is aware and citizens are aware, if they heard perhaps a previous comment of myself, that in nineteen eighty-nine, I served on the Planning Advisory Committee for the town of Chris Pamsis and received twenty-five dollars. And I also recognized I was volunteering. There is no question that the people who are on the Planning Advisory Committee in Chris Pamsis today, who are receiving twenty-five dollars per meeting thirty, almost thirty-two years later. And I, I think the twenty-five dollars per meeting was even before nineteen eighty-nine. So, we could be looking at almost thirty-five years. The rate has not changed. The value of their contribution and their volunteering is, is exactly the same. Although, Your Worship, I would like to think that if it was, if it was the feeling of the, of the town and the community back then, that these people deserved twenty-five dollars per meeting, that subsequent since nineteen eighty-nine, I would like to think that the salary of the counselors has increased quite substantially. And more recently, of course, council voted themselves for the next term, a healthy, a healthy increase, that they should possibly look at paying the Planning Advisory Committee a wage in, in, or a fee or in, in relation to the amount of time that's passed in the last thirty-two years. To me, if it was worth twenty-five dollars in nineteen eighty-nine, it was, it should be at least worth fifty dollars today. I'm hoping that council will look at it and say, "It's worth it." I would like to think that counselors aren't gonna sit back and say, "Oh, well, they're volunteers". I would like to think that counselors aren't going to sit back and say, oh, well, they're volunteers. Uh, yes, they are. But if you were willing to pay twenty-five dollars thirty-two years ago. Are you going to say, oh, well, it's still the same value now, or maybe, maybe stop paying them at all? And, but I mean, uh, council has, uh, has, has given themselves, uh, uh, a nice, healthy, uh, 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 increase. In recognition of what they feel is the hard work that they put into it. And one would like to think that the planning advisory committee is doing exactly the same thing, putting a lot of their time. Uh, into it and they should be, uh, recompensated accordingly to, uh, uh, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, standards. Uh, your worship, it's, it, it just, you know, it sort of boggles my mind that, that we've let this go on so long. That there should have been a little bit of an increase each year, but I'm hoping at budget time, we're not looking at a big sum here. I mean, it would only be in several hundreds of dollars or certainly maybe at low thousands. But in recognition that the people who are on the planning advisory committee today in nineteen, in twenty twenty-one. Are valued by the community in the same way they are valued by the community in nineteen eighty-nine. It just seems to me to be, uh, to be that, to be a, a proper way to do it. I won't be here to make the decision. Uh, it's up to council to make the decision, uh, uh, on their budget time. They want to save a thousand bucks, want to save fifteen hundred bucks, keep the P A C at twenty-five dollars. But think about it, thirty-two years is a long time without any kind of an increase. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Ryu. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, yes, thank you, your worship. In regard to the P A C and the police commission. I believe that non-elected representatives receive a stipend for gas mileage. When they have to go to a site to, uh, assess either a building site or, or whatever that may be. And I've been told by son that they simply dedicate or submit that money to a worthy cause. That it isn't about the, the money. The other thing, your worship, that I would like to point out is that the stipend increase for council. Was recommended after a twenty nineteen assessment and a comparison of many communities across New Brunswick. And it was found that we were in the twenty-fifth percentile. And, uh, when that was discovered, it was recommended. That it be boosted at least to the fiftieth percentile, which means, your worship, that there are fifty percent. Greater than us who are receiving, uh, more than we are. And, uh, that we still have a ways to go, so. So to say that council gave themselves that raise, I think that is somewhat misrepresented. And I do believe that when we asked the staff to do. An, uh, an assessment of all salaries, that was all taken into consideration. And it was also found that some of our travel and, and, um. Program assistance, I guess, in that, in some of the, uh, uh, meetings that we would attend. Was in excess or extremely excessive in comparison to other communities. And, uh, I think the eleven thousand dollar stipend that was dedicated to the mayor's office. Was reduced significantly as well. So the overall increase to council. I believe is about seven thousand dollars a year. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Because I think sometimes if we only give part of the information. We get a, a rather hazy, one-sided, uh, story. So it's very important to know that, that we followed. Uh, the recommendation of staff and it was a third party that actually did the study. So, thank you.
Counselor Olson.
Thank you, worship. I think we've gotten off the track here. Uh, council remuneration was decided long ago. That's not the item for discussion right now. We're talking about, uh, non-elected committee members. And the motion is on the floor to refer it to future council.
I agree, thank you.
I would like to, I would like to see that motion called.
Yes, thank you. I'm calling for the motion. On the question, please vote now. Oh, oh, Counselor Locke.
Just with respect to, um. What the motion is for is, um, the stipend. And I think, uh, one thing that was brought up though that's very important is, uh, when I was reading it through. Um, it did say that, uh, representatives could submit for mileage. Now, there's very little miles that are usually, um. Traveled around these areas on these boards and I, I would hope that in the future that perhaps that gets. Taken completely out and the stipend includes the total amount of what it would cost to sit on that board. Because the amount of time it takes an individual to fill out that expense form. And then give it to someone on staff to process it and then put it through the motions and do all the time with that is just an absolute. Uh, red tape nightmare. So, uh, from a, a stipend point of view, I, I think it's important that we pick the right amount. Commensurate for the position.
Ms. Snow?
Your worship, if I may just expand on when that was put in place. Uh, it was relating more to some of our representatives who served on the, um, subcommittees of the regional facilities. And they sometimes are put on, um, ad hoc committees that require a lot of meetings and there were parking. Um, expenses and just more travel in and out of the city. So that's why that was put in and, and P A C too. Sometimes, um, often they're out looking at the various sites like for variances and that around the town, so. Um, that's why those, the expenses for travel were put in.
Okay, I'm going to call for the question. Please vo- please vote now. Motion carried. Consideration and provision of the electronic devices and town email accounts to non-elected committee members is the resolution number two. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, yes, I would move that consideration of provision of electronic devices and town email accounts to non-elected committee members. Based on the reasons presented, council accepts staff's recommendation to not provide iPads. Or town email addresses to the non-elected appointees serving on the regional boards and commissions. As these boards and commissions are responsible for how they distribute, distribute their agendas and associated information to their board members. And the town consider providing P A C members who are already equipped with town iPads. With town email addresses and further, the town issue to the regional boards and commissions for information purposes. The recommendations from the town's I T management service provider.
Been moved, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question? Counselor Locke.
Thank you, worship. Um. Just with respect to the recommendation, I, I appreciate it. I can, uh, see the merits in it. Um, I disagree with it. I think the, um, members who are on P A C already have iPads. Um, we're talking here for individuals that are going to sit on two boards that are, um, vital to the community, the police and fire. Four total people, four total iPads and or phones. Um, I know the cost of these is not an issue. I think that there could be ways that we could do this, so. My only suggestion now is to then put forward to the boards. And for council to expect that the boards of those respective, uh, police and fire boards, uh, put in their budgets for next year. To provide these individuals with the proper tools to do the job on daily manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Locke. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, worship. Um, I, I guess just to tag on to Mr., Mr. Counselor Locke's comment. With the next incoming council, I don't know how often we change these, but, uh. The, the iPads that we have, I think they're probably, you know, there's probably four old ones kicking around or there would be four. Old ones kicking around that we could, we could use as well, so. Um, that, that's just to add on to that, so. I know they talked about different ways of doing it, but it, it would be nice if you had something that we know the town was totally secure. And that, that runs through our, our system, so, because we know there's been a lot of. Uh, attacks, cyber attacks in different places and, and we know we get in our emails. We, we get blocked out because we've got all the security, so anyways, I think. Again, the next council can decide that, but I also think they look at even using spare, spare ones that we have here, so.
Deputy Mayor.
Uh, yes, thank you. I don't know if this is directed to, um, Mrs. Snow. As to the sensitivity of the material, I know. Some of that, you know, certainly they do want to keep it from people, uh, from our volunteers' private or home computers. If that is the case and, and we don't want them on our exchange. Could they not have a designated email address through, let's say, for example. The police commissioner, the fire board or the P A C. Is that a possibility, Mrs. Snow?
I believe that was the intent with the motion to refer our I T, um, professional advice to these regional boards. Uh, what Counselor Locke had just mentioned, if they decided to include in their budgets and then they, um. Their information and the management of these devices would be done through the boards. Similar to what we do with council and, um, P A C.
Okay, I'll call for the motion. Please vote now. Motion carries six, one. Counselor Locke opposed. Thank you. Item eight C.
Uh, response from Chris Mon, provincial APers. Pronounce that right. Clarification on rules and regulations for appiculture, which is beekeeping operations. Concerning the Cedar Grove Drive residents' concern, uh, Joni Moore and Jocelyn Smith.
Counselor Locke.
Thank you, worship. Um, I don't know if it's only me, but I think I'm more confused now with this than I started. I was looking for a response, but I found in the response exactly what I had already read on the provincial website. So I didn't see a response from, um, this individual. And then with respect to, um, following it through with the, uh, the, the motion. Uh, or potential motion is, I find it bizarre that we can have provincial regulations with respect to registration of. Beekeepers and yet the municipalities that they reside in don't have access to that information, if I read that correctly. So I, it, I found it very bizarre and I, I don't know if there's anyone here that can maybe enlighten me further or if I've. Basically hit the synopsis, uh, on the button or not.
Uh, oh, sorry, Counselor Miller. Um, Mr. Loge.
Uh, your worship, Counselor Locke is, is, uh, is on the button, you know, we were told we ma- we, we should be managing it, but they won't tell us who we manage. So, um, and, uh, ultimately, the, all the bylaws from municipality are granted to us through the authority by the province. And so, uh, they're not, we don't have the authority to register them, but they say we should manage them. Um, so we're looking for a little bit of clarification on the particular ish, item. Um, there's some miss, there's some, um, different information that's being circulated as well, the number of hives that, that become an issue. Uh, staff has been investigating other communities in the, in, in the province. And, uh, we've, we've noticed that there's, some communities have outright bans on, specifically named bans of beehives. To, uh, uh, communities that, uh, allow them as a, as a, as a hobby type of a, a venture. So, so there are different models to choose from, but, uh, Counselor Locke is correct, it's finding out exactly what we're allowed to do first.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Oh, shoot. Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Loge, did they, I don't, I don't know in the discussions that you may have had. Do we know how many queen bees they actually have? Because that's significant, because apparently there's a queen bee for every hive.
That's correct. Generally, each hive has a queen bee. Um, there's a spec- there's a specific, um. Uh, legislative control over queens as well in the, in the act. Um, so if you have the, the, the nine hives or ten hives or two hives, you've got two nine or ten queens. Um, and what will happen is the hives, once a queen is. No longer as powerful as she thinks she might be, there's a, one of the other bees takes over as a queen because they're, they generate within the, within the brood. Uh, another queen, uh, pupae, another queen bee, wannabe. And, uh, that's usually what happens when you see a, a hive swarming out. The queen either abdicates and takes a bunch of workers with her or the new queen decides to establish a new colony and takes off, so. Uh, it, it's, it's an interesting, the, just going through this, it's, it's a very interesting and, um, intensive and, and. You know, both of, you can see both sides of the, of the argument, uh, you know, everything from the no mo may to the, to the folks that have allergies. It's, it's a very divisive in some communities and that's what we're seeing in the examination of the different bylaws that we see, um, about.
Is when we have all these hives, they are sometimes rented out to. Say, for example, commercial blueberry fields. So is that something that we have to look in, into as well? Because they could be coming and going all the time.
And I think that's where the provincial legislature comes into effect. The bee, the, usually the blueberry pollinators, for example, are done in truckloads of, of hives. And, and colonies, uh, that they're specifically bred for it and, and packaged so that they can be transported easily. I, I, I've, I sincerely doubt that in, in our community, we would see, you know, fifty, more than fifty hives. I think what we're looking at is a decision of council, uh, at some point when we bring back a staff report. Under our zoning bylaws is if we want to legislate a number of hives. Um, for example, under the P A C, you know, the, the, the backyard chickens is, has been restricted through P A C. And they usually go to three or four hens in, in a, in a coop. However, you know, we could take the same approach with hives and say maximum in any residential property is. If you have less than one acre, it's two hives and more than one acre, it's five hives. But ultimately, if, i- i- going back to Counselor Locke's question. If they have to register with the province because they all have to be inspected by the province, but the province won't tell us who has the hives to inspect. Then if somebody could set up some hives unless the neighbors, uh, report to them, to the town, we wouldn't know if there's hives in the area or not. Um, our ortho photos, just, just in the examination, we've, we've been able to locate. Uh, at least three properties in the community with more than, you know, the similar, like the eight, nine, ten hives on the, on the property, just from ortho photos, so. We would have to assume that they are all registered with the province because you have to buy. Uh, a queen and a colony from a registered APers and, uh, that comes with a certain amount of paperwork. But ultimately, again, it's provincial paperwork, it's not municipal paperwork and do we want to get into that business? Or buzzness, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, worship. Uh, yeah, we've learned a lot in the last couple of weeks. I, I, I guess where I'm still confused, I mean, we've heard, just talked about it be many times, but, okay, the province won't tell us who's there, but. If you called and asked them and said, at this, at this certain P I D, do they have it? Will they even answer yes or no to that?
Counselor Olson.
Thank you. Um, I think, your worship, it's fairly obvious that we need additional information. And I'm just wondering if we can, if we can have, uh, staff continue their investigation. Uh, by contacting other municipalities or trying to see who's got a bylaw, if any. And, uh, then make a, hopefully an educated guess on how we should proceed.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Perhaps we can add that to this resolution. Counselor Ryu.
Yeah, th- thank you, worship. I, I did find it, uh, disconcerting when I read it, to follow up on Mr. Loge's, or the report, rather. To follow up on Mr. Loge's, uh, comments that, uh, the provincial government will not give us a list of people who have. Who have the hives. Uh, I, 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 I find, and I'm hoping to follow up on, uh, uh, the counselor's, uh, motion that he's going to, is he going to be presenting. Uh, that, uh, staff look into it further because, uh, i- i- if somebody was brewing, uh, a microbrewery in their backyard. Or, you know, uh, we would like to know, or if they've got a small business, we would like to know. And we've got a right to know. like to know, and we've got a right to know. And, uh, but the government is saying, oh, this is all hush, hush. I don't, I don't know why it's all hush, hush. There's, it's, it's, it's very annoying that, um, if, if somebody's got a, a, a small business and they're using it as a business, then the town should be aware who, who's, who's running, who, who has the businesses in the town. Not that we're looking for any money from them, but we'd like to know where, where the businesses are in the community. And but the, but the, that line where they said, "We will not, uh, uh, let you know, um, who, who has and who has not," uh, oh my gosh, that, uh, that, that, uh, that hurts a lot, I think, uh, from a municipal, municipality point of view, that we, we should, we should be able to know. Thank, thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Rio. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to follow up on one thing, um, with respect to our last, uh, council meeting, uh, and that's relevant to this one, is I wanted to make it clear, uh, because I've been seeing a lot of, uh, things on various, uh, social media about, um, the last meeting, and I don't think it was ever the intent of us just having one side and attacking, uh, the individuals that have these bees. It was more of a, an informative thing. It was a, are we doing the right thing? Is there a, a, a PAC variance here? Is there business operating? Um, this has never been, I don't think that any council member here intended it to be an attack on that particular business on that street. It was about us finding out what's going on, getting some rules and regulations in place, and then figuring it out for the future of, of how we get a amicable decision on both sides going forward. So I wanted to clarify that for, for everybody in the community.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. So we have a resolution here. Um, Counselor Luck.
I'd move that, uh, Mr. Mon, apparently, if we can send it to him, be thanked for his correspondence, clarifying the differences between a hobbyist and a commercial beekeeper, as well as confirming that the Apary Inspection Act does not have any requirements concerning where a honeybee colony can be kept. And his interpretation that bees are classified as domesticated animal, but he'd be asked to clarify under what authority the Department of Eciculture, Aquaculture, and Fisheries feel they cannot share with the town which properties within our boundaries have approved apiary licenses and/or are registered with the department, as this information will assist the town in its investigation on this matter, acknowledging that other provincial departments, such as Public Health, Environment, and Transportation, and Infrastructure provide such information to the municipality on an ongoing basis. And further, staff follow up with other municipalities as part of their investigation to see how they address beehives. And was there something else we wanted to add from Counselor Olson?
I think that was your, I think that was Counselor Olson's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Thank you. Item nine, correspondence, nine A.
Jocelyn Parker, scoop and poop bylaw, and staff report from Director of Community Services.
Ms. Perton Dixon, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, your worship, moved from bee poop to dog poop. Um, as, uh, you've probably read in your council kit, the deputy mayor has forwarded correspondence from a resident complaining about, uh, scoop and scoop signage, and I thought I'd take the opportunity because it's common, uh, common complaint. I'm sure you've all heard it, especially in the spring. Quispamsis is, like other communities, it's, uh, very common sight, unfortunately, on, on the sides of the streets and the trails. So I just thought I'd take the opportunity to explain the process where the Director of Engineering and I collaborate on these type of complaints whereby he's the manager of bylaws and the contract for the SPCA. So he would speak to the SPCA about patrols, if there's certain hotspots, if you will, we, uh, would allocate those resources to that. And as the Community Services Department, we would respond to the request if it's regarding a trail. So if it, there's, um, garbage cans or signage, what have you, sta- bag dispensers, then we would respond to that. So, um, I wanted to share a little bit of background and recommend that we move that information forward to, uh, the next council as part of strategic planning process, because, uh, when we have these requests, there is, uh, obviously some thought and care put into each request, because there are many, and there frequently, we don't put these, uh, furnitures and fixtures, equipment, out, um, willy-nilly with throughout the community. Uh, the Parks and Facilities Department had created a plan several years ago with regard to strategically placing, you know, this equipment, um, throughout our trail network, and we are currently working on updating that plan. We've created a list, an inventory, uh, because of the asset management process that we've just been through. So we have a list of, uh, signage and benches, garbage cans, scoop and scoop, um, dispensers, and where they're located through our trail network. And we'll be reaching out to other communities for best practices on, on that equipment. So, for example, distance, is it one kilometer apart? Is it locations at trailheads and parking lots, things like that? So we're going to be moving forward to create that, uh, update that plan that we already have in place, and with regard to the asset management information that we've been collecting as well. So I think it's important for the next council to consider that as part of their plan, and I know it seems perhaps, um, a small thing, but it's actually not. We have, uh, a hundred thousand dog poop bags that would be dispensed each year in our community. Ten thousand, uh, ten thousand of those per month from April to November, and five thousand a month in the other months, which costs about sixty-five hundred dollars a year. For sign is two hundred dollars, a garbage can is seven hundred dollars, um, a dog dispenser is five hundred and, five hundred and sixty dollars. Um, the annual cost of bags, as I mentioned, is six, sixty-five hundred dollars. It's a lot. And the, of the items that I mentioned, that doesn't include the installation. And then, once you install it, you have to inspect it, and you have to maintain it, you have to replace it. So there is a lot of cost. It may seem like a small request. A bench is a thousand dollars. You have to put a concrete pad down for a bench and some, for some garbage cans. So again, there's a lot, a lot when you ask for signage or garbage cans. You have to have a plan. And so I just wanted to share that with council, so, for your information. So if you get those requests from residents, you can, uh, you can answer it with, with that information. We do have an inventory of twelve signs that we'll be adding to trailheads, the scoop and scoop signs by the bag dispensers. So we have an inventory that will be out this week. We'll add additional, uh, twelve signs. But, um, I just thought you'd like to know that there's, that's what's involved, and we take those requests seriously, and we analyze that information, and we'll continue to do so. We have, for example, ninety garbage cans that are out in our community that have to be emptied every week throughout, throughout the, uh, summer and fall season, and that was reduced by half in the winter. So we have a contract with, with Pharaoh for that pickup. So there are costs. Everything, as you know, everything we do, there's a cost. And I just wanted to, to share that with, and take the opportunity with the, the email that was forwarded from the deputy mayor to explain our process and the costs that, that, uh, go along with providing that service, and how much in demand, uh, that is, because, uh, to me, that number is, the numbers are staggering, that, uh, that we'd have a hundred thousand bags used in our community in a year.
Thank you, Ms. Perton Dixon, very much. Counselor Olson.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Dixon, for that, uh, clarification. I guess that, um, it's her own fault, because we take pride in providing a lot of trails. And, uh, a lot of people, I think, utilize portions of the trails. They don't go from A to Z. They go from A to B, and then B to C, and, you know, so their traveling time is a short period of time, and that's where they think that some of them are looking to dispose of a garbage bag, uh, you know, a doggy bag. And, uh, that might be, uh, adding to, uh, the additional costs and, and frustrations, you know, for staff to pick just the right location for those. So, uh, but I do, uh, appreciate that it's a little bit more complex, and sometimes you think, when you just, uh, yeah, why, why couldn't we have a bag here, bag drop off here, pickup, or whatever? I've gotten those questions myself. I've got some answers now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Perton Dixon. Uh, and I, the response to Mrs. Parker, uh, I think one of her big concerns was that her front lawn gets to be the drop-off point, and, and, uh, she was hoping that perhaps if we looked at a, uh, I guess, a prototype or, uh, a tester, just to see if we could put some bags and so forth in a community. Uh, but certainly that, that explains it. But moving forward, perhaps that will be an initiative that, uh, that can be talked about at another time, having them placed, uh, maybe strategically in the middle of a, a community or a residential area. Just a, just a thought.
Counselor Rio.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, uh, last meeting, it was bee poop, and tonight it's, uh, animal excrement. I mean, I only hope for the co- upcoming council that the, that the items that they have won't have to deal with, uh, with these kinds of things, but they are an important part of our citizens. Uh, I, I have to admit, I, uh, in the campaigning that I did over the last several years, um, I cannot believe the, the, the number of, uh, animals that we have, uh, pets, uh, uh, in, in the community. Um, and, uh, the, the numbers that were given to us by Mrs. Perton Dixon with regards to bags and so on, is, is, well, it was much beyond what I, I thought that, that we were, uh, responsible for. And, uh, and I've watched, uh, you know, I watched citizens, uh, up and down the street, carrying the, their, their dog, uh, business with them. You feel for them, but we, uh, and I, I think this lady's alluding to the fact that, uh, it's obvious in her note, that she'd like to see them more in the community, but there's a cost involved, and, um, uh, probably quite an extensive cost if it, if it went to, uh, if we all of a sudden put them in some, some, uh, one, one of the residential areas, and we didn't put them in another, and you'd be looking at staggering costs to take care of this. But, but, uh, your worship, that's, that's two meetings in a row, we've been dealing with, with animals, and, uh, I hope that the future council, uh, doesn't have to deal with this as much as we do. But I, I, I say that tongue in cheek, but I realize this, the, that it is a concern with the community, and, uh, I hope them, uh, people all the best with regards to it. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Lockery.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, thank you to the Director of Community Services for the, um, information that you provided. It was very valuable, and I'm sure that it will help the council in responding to some of the, uh, um, residents' concerns. I think it'd be prudent to make a motion that we refer the discussion regarding the placement of public waste containers, signage, poop, and scoop signage, and public benches to the strategic planning process for the incoming council.
This has been moved by Counselor Lockery, seconded by, I don't see anyone here. Counselor Miller. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine B.
Your worship, correspondence from Julie Evans, Sweet Caroline Foundation, Purple Light in Recognition of Allergy Awareness Month, and our Parks and Facilities Manager did, did find a, a purple light after extensive searching online, and I believe it is up at Town Hall, or is out front here now, so.
Yep. Shining on the back of our heads, or mine, anyway. Thank you. We have a resolution here. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, yes. In response to Ms. Julie Evans, the town has installed a purple light, actually four purple lights, at the Quispamsis Town Hall in recognition of May being the Sweet Caroline Foundation's Food Allergy Awareness Month.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Harris, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine C.
Correspondence from Ted and Jerry Gardner, and Rowley McIntyre, Wellington Court Drainage Concerns. And there's a staff report from the Director of Engineering.
Thank you. Mr. Loge, did you want to speak on this, or do you want to wait to see if there's any questions? Sorry, just one second.
Uh, your, your worship, um, Mr. Gardner and Mr. McIntyre couldn't be here this evening. Um, to, to speak to their concerns, what I had advised them was that, um, the recommendation before council this evening essentially is, we're, we're awaiting what the DOE and DFO have, uh, as far as concerns for the work that was performed at the particular location. And, uh, uh, I think it's, it's, uh, it's probably, the recommendations can, can be forwarded this evening, and it's, it was not going to impact whether they show up or not. So, the, I'm sure, um, once we have final recommendations, we can bring it back before council if it requires that action, and then invite, uh, the residents to speak at that time if they wish.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I'd move the re- the, the correspondence be referred to the Engineering Department to address any issues that may be brought forward by the Fish Department of Environment or Federal Department of Fisheries, and that town staff continue to monitor the area for evidence of erosion or blockage.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Rio. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine D.
Correspondence from Minister Jill Green, Transportation and Infrastructure, request for updated five-year municipal designated highways program, and they want, um, the priorities by June thirtieth.
Counselor Thompson.
Yes, your worship. I would move that, um, Mr. Minister Green's letter be referred to the Engineering Department to draft the updated five-year municipally designated highways program for the incoming council's review at the June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting.
It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Nine E.
Staff report from CAO DeVille, thanking the outgoing council members, and also the outgoing council members, uh, have opportunity for comments.
Thank you. We have a resolution here from Ms. DeVille. Counselor Olson.
I'd move appreciation and best wishes be extended to the outgoing members of council for their years of service, and Ms. DeVille's letter of thanks be received and filed.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Nine E one, which is outgoing council members' opportunity for comments. I put, we've put this on there for, uh, for the three outgoing council members, and I will start with Counselor Lockery, if you would like to say a few words.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I just want to say that, uh, it has been a tremendous honor to have served the residents of Quispamsis for twenty years, five terms. Uh, I've seen a lot of things happen, uh, in Quispamsis over that time period. I think I started in, uh, on the Planning Advisory Committee before moving to council, and I was on Planning Advisory Committee, I, I think it was a good ten years before, uh, Counselor Ryu took over. And, uh, it's been a pleasure working with, uh, with this council, with all the councils that I've worked with, with the town staff. Uh, I, it's like a second home here. I, I've, I've, uh, enjoyed every minute of it, and, uh, it's, you know, seen a lot of really great things happen in this community. When I started in coun- in the council chambers, we were in a, in the, uh, in the room above the, uh, fire station in, in the, in the civic center, and saw this beautiful building be built, and, uh, you know, great pride in having the cube. and saw this beautiful building be built, and, you know, great pride in having the Q-Plux being part of that. So I've seen many changes throughout the, throughout the town, many new streets, many new and exciting things that have happened over the years, and so glad that I was able to be a part of that. Always felt that it was important to be involved in your community, and, you know, if you're, if you're, you know, if you're, I, I, I always felt like if I was going to complain, I needed to be able to stand behind and say, speak up for, you know, what, what I believed in. And so, you know, I always, I, I started this way back when, when I was in a neighborhood, and we rallied around a particular item, and kind of got my passion going from there. And it has been just a tremendous honor to be here, and I'm probably rambling because I didn't prepare anything, but I just want to say thank you to everyone, and I wish everyone the best of luck in the future. It'll be sad not coming here on Tuesday nights any longer. It'll, it'll probably be very weird in the beginning. I'll probably be want to grab my coat and come, but it, it, you know, I think it'll be nice to have some new council members come in, some new blood. It'll be different. It'll be welcome, and I wish everyone the best of luck, and I wish everyone, you know, the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lockery. It was a pleasure, and thank you for all the years of service here. Counselor Luck.
Thank you, worship. I was going to wing it, but then I decided about 40 minutes before coming here to put something on paper so I wouldn't ramble too much. So just bear with me for about two minutes. First of all, I want to thank everyone who voted for me five short years ago, as well as my family and friends that encouraged and supported me from the beginning. I entered municipal politics after the sale of my pharmacies to hopefully bring some business knowledge and experience gained over the past 25 years, working for major international corporations and independent pharmacies. I generally believe that continuous improvement and increased efficiencies are important keys to business success and are not exclusive to politics at any level. It was through that lens that I engaged staff and council alike while representing the residents of Quispamsis. It has not always been easy. In fact, at times I did feel I was on an island by myself. However, change is hard, takes perseverance, effort, and time. I feel one of the major accomplishments of our tenure was the approval of the internal audit for the town, something that had not been completed for 25 years. The audit was informative and can now be used to compare ourselves with towns of similar size with the use of performance metrics. I hope that future councils will continue with additional internal performance and financial audits to always make sure that residents of Quispamsis are having their tax dollars spent wisely and efficiently. My time as a softball player and coach of minor sports teams enabled me to promote the nighttime lighting of Ian's Cove Field and protective netting for the volleyball courts and around the field, which I must say, after we did that, I actually didn't play softball anymore, so I missed it, but when I'm there at night and looking at what was accomplished, I, I commend the, the staff for, for doing that. We have seen our town grow, it's tax-based, and are in the middle of a mini boon as you speak. The one thing to always bear in mind is that a growing town needs infrastructure, and added infrastructure means future maintenance and upkeep. We are seeing this now with roads that are starting to deteriorate and sewer lines and pump stations that need upgrading. We commissioned a report on a large-scale municipal water distribution system, and the numbers are astronomical. At the end of the day, to operate a progressive town like Quispamsis takes committed employees, council, and residents. It does not come with, without cost, and the tax rate is what pays the bills. I assure you that for five consecutive years, every member on council was watching the pennies trying to maintain your tax rate. Not everyone will be happy, and that is to be expected, but always remember that every time I sat in this chair, I made it my mission to come informed, and every decision I made was based on the information provided by PAC, staff, as well as outside professionals. I never took sides, always spoke my mind, I'm sure everyone will tell you that, demanded accountability, and always voted for the greater good and the residents of Quispamsis. The decision to reoffer was tough, but I'm happy with it, and will focus now on building my dream home in Quispamsis over the next year. So thank you, everyone, for the opportunity, and perhaps you'll see me again.
Thank you, Counselor Luck, and thank you for your dedication as well over the past five years, and I know you sat on many boards and police commission and fire and so many, so many hours spent, so the dedication. Thank you. Counselor Ryu.
Thank you, worship. I've prepared a, an 80-page, 80-page comment here, but I think I'll stick to the executive summary. I think people would appreciate that. Seventeen years ago in May, I was elected for the first time, and believe you me, it was an exciting day for myself and my wife and my family. It was something that I had thought about for, for many, many years, and to finally see the, the effort that I had put forth to campaign, get my name out there, come to fruition was, was extremely exciting. As you know, it's very humbling as a municipal candidate because it's only yourself that is there knocking on the door. In my, in my case, it was only me. It wasn't a team or anything. It was just myself, and to have people have confidence in me, shake my hand and say, thanks for coming by, appreciate it. As you know, people who run in federal or provincial elections, they have money coming in from the federal parties or provincial parties. They have a team to work with them. They have a team message. Well, my message was myself, and as all municipal candidates do, you go and you knock on the door and you ask people, would you give me your vote? These are some of the ideas I have. I appreciate your consideration. And when they say yes, it's, it's quite a feeling. I enjoyed representing, extremely enjoyed representing the town of Quispamsis, because when I was a young man, one of the lessons my father taught me was the most important thing in life is empathy, and if you have a skill or ability, he said, make use of it. And one of the skills and ability I always had, I think, was speaking for other people. If they wanted something to be said, maybe they'd come to me and I could express it for them and represent them and various things, and I did that through my career. This is not the final chapter in my life. I'm hoping it's a, it's a, it's a new chapter. I don't, I didn't really want to be known as a politi- just a politician. I wanted to be known as other things, and I've done many things. As many of you know, I'm a musician. I've been an actor. I've, I've been an educator, had a family, have a family. But it's time to move on into another chapter, and hopefully it's a, it's a new chapter. I'm so looking forward to it. I want to thank all the past staff. They were very helpful to me. They made me welcome the very first day. I remember the night after the election, I got a call at nine o'clock in the morning from Mike Brennan, who I'd never, not really had met before, even though I had been on PAC for several years, but Mike one of us says, hey, welcome aboard, Pierre. And I said, oh my God, did that ever feel nice. But then he said, he said, Pierre, there's a conference in Edmiston next week, the municipalities conference, Canadian municipalities conference, and you're eligible to go. And I say, woo wee, Nancy, we're going, you know. So it was exciting. We enjoyed that conference. It was absolutely wonderful. Mayor Maloney was there at the time. He stayed on the same floor as the Prime Minister and had all the detectives walking up and down the hall. Ron felt really comfortable with that. I want to thank the citizens of this beautiful town. I'm, I'm so happy to have been a part of what I would call the, the golden age of Quispamsis. The last 17 years, last 20 years have seen us grow exponentially, get recognized across Canada, get recognized in the Maritimes, and it's, it's been absolutely wonderful to be, have been a part of that. I want to thank, of course, my family who supported me, and as my wife Nancy said to me tonight, as I left the house, she's going to have to give up her quiet Tuesday evenings, so, so it's bad for her that I'm going to be home on Tuesday nights, but that's okay. Over the years of 31 years in teaching and 17 years on council and PAC previous to that, my life has been a life full of caring for others and, and help, helping them when I can. If anything, anytime people needed something, I, I hope that I could help them out and do something. But so, ladies and gentlemen, I can finally say, free at last, free at last. Thank God Almighty, I'm free at last. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Ryu. And thank you for your years of service and.
Yeah, oh, thank, thank you, your worship. Thank you.
Item 10, bylaws. There's nothing. 11, new business. 11A.
Award of 2021 Capital Street Program Tender, which was placed on the agenda tentatively, but we are actually still waiting for approval from the Municipal Capital Borrowing Board. So, your worship, if this could be, I guess, referred to, either it will be an email poll of this council once we do receive that approval or go to the next council.
We can, we can probably. Yes. Yeah. Counselor Miller.
I guess that was my question is, when do we expect this? Because, you know, I see Rossi's already started doing the street capital program, and we've got a pretty healthy one as far as the number and length of streets, so I don't know if Chris is on the line, or Mr. Loge may know the answer.
Mr. Loge.
The, the treasurer spoke with the capital borrowing officials today. The hearing was last Monday. They advised her that it could take up to three weeks to receive the notification. However, with the changeover of council, she's pressed upon the urgency of receiving notification as soon as they can, and she's been in communication with them daily, and they anticipate having something for her shortly, but they prefaced that with, you know, this could take up to three weeks, is what they start their conversations with. So that's what we're, we're, we'll, we'll keep council advised up to the second as soon as the notification comes through.
Thank you. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, worship. I wonder if it'd be beneficial for us to contact our MLA, the Premier of New Brunswick.
The, it's, it's an ad-length division, provision of the provincial government, so the premier's office would not have that level of influence, and I doubt that would be looked upon favorably if you go to your mother or father and ask for something that your uncle's not giving you.
Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. I, I, I guess, not knowing the protocol here, the rubbish rules, or whatever stands, whatever takes place here, I'm just curious why we couldn't vote on approval based on the, based on the financial, no? Because to me, it would be like then, then once you get the financial in, it's done. I don't believe we can, but I'm going to refer this to Ms. Snow.
The town treasurer, I believe, is online. He can speak to that, but I don't believe we are, have authority to do that. Counselor Miller.
Ms. Brandon, are you with us?
Yeah, your worship, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So yes, we do have to wait for their approval. I have been in contact with them. They do know the urgency, but we cannot sign any of the contracts or move forward with anything until we get that approval.
Thank you for the clarification on that, Ms. Brandon. I'm have to add, go Oilers, go. I see that there.
Thank you.
Your worship, as soon as we receive word, we will, we will be following up with an email poll of, of council. We thought, we had hoped we'd have had it for tonight. That's why it was placed on the agenda.
Counselor Luck.
Just two, two questions. First, to Ms. Brandon, that is a really unique placement of that jersey. But has the town ever been refused, any of our requests for capital projects for streets?
Through your worship. No, we have not.
Okay, so then I'll switch it over to Director of Engineering Works, and I've seen our crews out on streets that we are going to be doing, or presumably. Is there anything that we can do in advance, knowing that we will be getting our money and that the town can kind of prep and get ready for whatever we have to do in anticipation of getting this approval?
Mr. Loge.
So, so, your worship, what we, we, we do have town staff working on streets that are in preparation for the contractor, as well as our engineering staff, say, marking out this stuff that is our own operational funding, something that we don't have to borrow for that doesn't fall into that process. As, as the treasurer mentioned, it's, it's the award, the signing of contracts with, with a third party that's being held up. But all our own internal work continues. Infrastructure, locations, site prep that is done by our own town staff can be done, and it is, and it is, it is ongoing at the moment.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I did, I have seen, like I say, the trucks are out and the staff are out, and they're on roads that I know we, I was expecting there to be, you know, other trucks on, so I, clearly you guys are keeping up with it. Thank you very much.
I would say that we're looking for a motion possibly to refer this then to the, the next council meeting.
Or in the C word, like this week, or before the swearing in of the new council, then it will be.
An email.
An email poll.
Email poll.
That can be ratified by.
Okay. Counselor Luck, did you want to make that motion?
I move that we wait until we have official word and either send out an email poll or ratification poll or next council for approval.
Thank you, Counselor Luck, seconded by Deputy Mayor. On the question, Counselor Olson.
Just on the question, your worship.
Go ahead.
The motion to refer to the coming in council, because can't we approve it?
It, we can if we got the information before. It can be approved by email.
That's still in existence, like, you know.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you. Please vote now. Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Motion carried. Item 11B.
RFP 2021 TQ 04-15, Mountain Bike Trails Project Notification of a $40,000 Grant Approval and Staff Report from the Director of Community Services Regarding the Award of Tender.
Counselor Ryu.
I was gonna, I was gonna make a motion, your worship, to award RFP 2021 TQ 04-15 Mountain Bike Trails Project to trail flow for $70,000 plus HST.
It's been moved by Counselor Ryu, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question, Counselor Luck.
I must say, after seeing the proposal, I've been excited for this to begin with, but then seeing the proposal, it makes me want to go out and buy a mountain bike. And I also want to say that, you know, the, the spinoff of this is that we have two bike companies in the town that I think are going to benefit immensely from, from us investing in this project. So I think it's absolutely excellent for the town to continue on our parks and recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried. Item 12, reports. Counselor Olson.
Will be received and filed.
It's been moved, oh. Yes.
If I may, it has come to my attention that under, and I'm just going to read the response that came from regarding the bees. I thought it was in the package, and I had a few people say they were confused, and this might clarify. I omitted accidentally putting the letter in. I had the act in there, and I guess the letter we sent, but not the response from the province, which I'll just quickly read because it explains a little better what that was about. It's from Chris Mon, who's the bee, the provincial bee apicultural person. And he, he wrote in an email, thank you for your request for information on provincial requirements for apiculture operations. My responses are below. The honeybee, and I'm not going to say the Latin names, but it does a spring cleansing flight. This is explained in the following link, and he gives a link. And warm days in the late winter and early spring allows bees that have been cooped up in their hives all winter a chance to perform cleansing flights. The honeybees would tend to not fly far in the spring because it is cooler. With respect to how they differentiate between commercial and hobbyist apiculture, the province categorizes a hobby beekeeper as someone who has 49 or fewer honeybee colonies, and a commercial beekeeper as having 50 or more colonies. This is only for the purposes of making a category and has no bearing on whether or not. This is only for the purposes of making a category and has no bearing on whether or not the person is making an income from beekeeping. We asked about the requirements regarding the size of property or closeness of adjacent property owners. And he said the Epituary Inspection Act does not have any requirements regarding where a honeybee colony may be kept or how many may be kept. For locations within cities, towns or village limits, citing restrictions are sometimes included in municipal bylaws. We asked if his department considered bees as livestock. He wrote that the department does not have a document that categorizes the honeybee. The honeybee is a domesticated animal. I have been told that customs categorizes it as livestock, but I will, I will, but I have not verified that. We asked if he could confirm the Pettingill Road property, if it had been registered. And he wrote, I do not think that I am permitted to answer this question due to privacy concerns. Then we asked, could the town receive a list of properties within its boundaries that had been approved for beehives? And he wrote, I do not think that I am permitted to answer this question due to privacy concerns. Sincerely, Chris Mon. And I will send that out to council members, but that might have clarified your questions. That's all I have, your worship.
Thank you, Ms. Snow, for the clarification on that. Counselor Miller.
First I'll second it, then I'll go on the question.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Miller on the question. Go ahead, Counselor.
On the question, I don't know if Krista's still on the line or not.
Ms. Brandon, are you still on the line with us? There you go. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Miller.
I just have a question. Thank you for, I was looking through the unaudited and it's kind of, it's not on the unaudited, but it's a question with one of our major loans that was coming due this year. So we finished ten of the fifteen years of our Qplex loan and we paid off about ten point one million of the fifteen million. At a, I think our interest rate was somewhere around three point two, give or take. And we're paying about one point two million a year payments. We've just refinanced, I think, this month, or is this also pending the refinancing as well? Is, is this remaining still? Because we also needed to refinance like four point nine million. And my question was going to be, what is the new interest payments and what are we, what's the variation versus what we used to pay? Like, how much are we saving per year? But is that also held up in the finance, in the, in the, in the board?
Well, your worship, through you. So the information would come from the municipal capital borrowing board. I did put in the application to do the refinancing of the four point six million. The payment comes out on May twenty-fifth. And they should be funding us again, that difference on May twenty-fifth as well. But I have not yet seen that to venture schedule, but I do anticipate that the interest rate will be significantly lower than, than the three point two, I believe that it was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Okay, anything further under reports? Please vote now. Motion carried. Item thirteen, business arising from committee. Nothing. So at this time, I will call for a motion for a German and I do see it fitting probably that maybe some of the outgoing council members could, could take this. The three of us could make a motion to, to adjourn. Is that, would you mind doing that, guys? You know, I mean, we could, we, we can do it unofficially, but it's a.
I'm gonna, I'd like to, but we just, we, I just talked to Ms. Snow and we have to just do a mover and a seconder, so.
Well, well, yeah, a mover and a seconder. Yeah, but what I'm saying is that could the three of us make the motion? Could the motion have three names on it, I guess? If it's, if it's okay with them, I mean.
I don't, I don't believe so. I have to ask Ms. Snow. So in the minutes?
In the minutes.
We'll acknowledge the three and all three of your lights are on, so we're going to do that.
If they don't mind, that's, I think that's a nice way to end this council, your worship. Thank you, thank you.
We'll do that.
So the three of you, Counselor Ryu, Counselor Lockery, Counselor Luck are the movers and seconders on the adjournment of this council meeting. Please vote now. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. Take care and stay safe. And log out.